Okay, Mayor.
Have a motion to come out of closed session, please.
I'll move. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you to the public for waiting for us to get a closed session. We're done with that now. So I see on the agenda next are the minutes for October 14th, 2020, caucus and regular meeting. Those will need approval, but before we do that, I just wanted to say that they don't completely reflect the reality of those two meetings. So I object to both, actually, just under record.
Mayor, the meetings are recorded and they are online if anybody wishes to see them.
So the written record doesn't reflect the fact that I did say that the clerk was violating my rights under NJSA 4860-5. There's also the resolution that came in at 6:39 PM. That was clearly objected to because that resolution came in after the meeting started, although it had been certainly drafted well before the meeting, but Mr. Marinello, as he always does, gains the timing of things that he thinks are going to improve the majority's position. So we reject that as well. Objection from me to all the minutes and also to the approval of the prior minutes, which are reflected in these minutes. So that's not reflected either. That said, you're free to do as you wish as a counsel.
Motion to pass?
Second. Counsel person Sparrow?
No.
Sabari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
No.
Have a motion to open to the public for comment?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, just virtually raise your hand or wave at us and we'll permit you to come in and say what's on your mind.
I don't
I should also say that it would be much better if the council members turned their camera on so that the public could actually see you. So that's Jimmy at Debbie. Turn on your cameras. So I don't see anyone from the public.
No, I do not.
I make a motion to close to public.
So moved. Second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda are is the resolution 2020. This is 174 authorized the purchase of security cameras through the county co-op contract 1932. But by the way, just just so I'm clear, the company that's referenced here is called Packet Talk LLC. Does anyone on council have any affiliation directly or indirectly with that company?
No, I don't.
Okay, good.
Not that I'm aware of.
Does anyone else?
No.
All right. So the answer is no from council. You go ahead and if there's a motion, we could move it forward.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel?
You have, hold on a second, hold on a second. This is the resolution?
Yeah.
174? Resolution 174. It just got moved and seconded.
Okay.
Counsel persons rule? Oh, you know what? I went out of order. I'm sorry. Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Thank you. It passes.
Right. Next up is ordinance 20-08. This is an ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation for severance liabilities. Can someone just maybe the clerk can explain who is this specifically referencing in terms of liabilities? Is there one individual or is there?
Let me look it up. I had Councilman Pharaoh had asked me the same question for the last meeting. Let me just check my notes because I had sent it to him. Give me one second. It is Chafi Regan Mura Murphy Hill. Did
So moved.
Hold on.
You have to open it to the public.
I thought Chafi was already involved. Had his, you, the Democratic majority gave Chafi his, you know, whatever $100,000 or $600,000 worth of severance. What, why is it getting approved again?
This is the
And by the way, I objected to it the first time. He should not be getting a penny, but go ahead.
Mayor, the borough's not giving him money. It is his money.
No, but a judge took that money away from him and this council gave it back to him.
This is the time that they accumulated over their career.
Right, and that then and a judge and a judge took that away, but this council gave it back.
Are we going to open to the public?
So this is a second reading, so it's a public hearing.
That is correct.
So the public has to speak. So I guess I need a motion to open to the public just to speak on this one matter.
Correct.
So moved.
All right.
Second, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the public is invited now to speak as to one specific ordinance is 20-08. It's the ordinance authorizing special emergency appropriation for severance liabilities that we've been discussing. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, just raise your hand virtually and we'll call on you.
Mayor, I see no one.
Okay. Have a motion to close the public portion on this.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt, Mayor?
Yes, I have one. If somebody wants to make one. If not
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Counsel persons Pharaoh?
No.
Sabari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
No, because I also thought that Chafi was completely taken care of already earlier this year.
How about for the other individuals?
I'm fine with that. You can't vote individuals.
No, I understand. I just wanted him to clarify his comment because it sounds like he's not in favor of anyone. Okay.
I didn't say that. I said I thought I thought Chafi was already taken care of earlier this year. I do not have an issue with the other individuals to be clicked.
Okay.
Okay, the next ordinance, which is up for public hearing is 20-09. An ordinance amending ordinance number 20-04 entitled, quote, "An ordinance fixing salaries, wages, and compensation for all salaried, appointed, and elected officers within the borough of Anglerwood Cliffs in the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey," close quote, "for office of emergency management and planning board secretary." So I don't know, I don't know if the public has a copy of this, but essentially what's happening here is the Office of Emergency Management Coordinator is getting a $4,000 per year salary. The Office of Emergency Management Deputy Coordinator is getting a $500 a year salary. And the Secretary to the Planning Board is getting an annual salary of $10,000 plus $300 per special meeting, and that's for 2019 and 2020. Is that correct? Was that?
Yes, it is.
So we need to open to the public to speak just on that matter.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so if there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak as to ordinance 20-09, we invite you to do that now.
No one has their hands up, Mayor.
Okay, have a motion to close the public portion of this.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Is that Gloria?
Aye.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel persons Pharaoh?
No.
Sabari? Councilwoman Sabari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
No.
Passes, Mayor.
Hey, the next ordinance, which is also second reading, public hearing 20-10 is an ordinance in the borough of Anglerwood Cliffs in the county of Bergen, New Jersey, providing for a contribution toward the construction of affordable housing in the borough of, in the borough and appropriating $1,450,000 therefore, and providing for the issuance of $1,377,500 in bonds or notes of the borough to finance the same.
Contribution, Mayor, that's correct title. In construction. I think you read it wrong. We need to open to the public?
Yeah, can you actually just explain to the public what what this is for and how it's supposed to be used?
Mr. Marinello has the notes on it.
Yes, from what I've been told from our affordable housing guys, as they explained actually at the last meeting to us, that this is in order to provide enough money into the COA funds so that we're a more attractive candidate for the 9% tax credits. It's essentially borrowing the money now that will eventually be coming in from the LG site for their COA contribution. So if things work as we hope that they will, we'll be borrowing this money now, and then when the COA contribution is made down the road, this money will be canceled out, so we won't, we won't need it. But in the meantime, it provides us with funds so that we're a more attractive candidate for the 9% tax credits.
Mr. Marinello, who actually drafted this ordinance?
Not me.
Bond council, Mayor.
That's Yeah, that's right. Mr. Mayor.
That's the Decotis firm?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm not going to make any comment on this ordinance at the moment, but if there's anyone from the public, we will open up. Have a motion to open to the public?
So moved. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak as to this ordinance 20-10 regarding the affordable housing bonding, you're invited to do so now. Just raise your hand virtually.
Skolnick, Mayor has, please.
Yes, Ms. Skolnick, please.
What would be the downside of doing?
I'm sorry, could you just state your name and your address for the record?
Sure, Heidi Skolnick, 19, 10 Sanford.
Thank you.
What would be, what is the downside of doing so? What is the upside and the downside of this proposition?
You were asking, Mr. Mayor, you want me to answer that?
I guess, I guess, I guess I understand the upside. What would be the downside?
Yeah, I only see downside in affordable housing, so maybe Mr. Marinello should, should answer this question. Actually, let me clarify that. I only see downside in affordable housing the way this Democrat majority has conducted it, but Mr. Marinello, go ahead.
The downside of not doing it or the downside of doing it?
The downside of doing it.
I don't really see any downside of doing it.
Okay.
What's the downside of not doing it?
Then you might not be an attractive candidate for the tax credits, and then you may end up having to build this yourself on your own.
We would, downside is, is that we, we would be entitled to the lower tax credit, and it would wind up costing the borough a lot more money out of pocket if we don't qualify for the 9%. So that's quite a big downside.
Risk is much greater to not do it than to do it.
Absolutely.
How does the timing issue work, though? You mentioned earlier, I think it was Mr. Duffy or you mentioned, or actually it was Mr. Marinello. You mentioned that it's basically a timing issue, that you're waiting for money to come in from LG's property. What, how much of a timing issue is that?
They're just waiting to get their final CO, Mr. Mayor, as I understand that there's only a few things left before they get their final CO, and that's when the payment is due, so. I mean, I can't control when that will happen, so in order to make sure we're as attractive a candidate as we can, this is what we're doing.
I guess in that case, then why aren't we just focused on making sure that whatever items have to be done for them to get their CO and make their payment, that that gets done? So I'm having a little trouble understanding why we would have to go out and borrow money when we know money's coming in anyway. But other than a billable opportunity for bond council, I'm not sure why we're doing this.
Yeah, because that's just the way it works, Mr. Mayor. If you wanted to take a chance, you could do that, and then you would end up being saddled with a lot more cost to the borough. Unfortunately, that's just not a risk that seems to be worth taking, so.
That seems like a non-answer, right? Because we know LG has built their building. We know they're going to have a CO issued at some point in the near future.
Which is why, which is why this makes the most sense.
It seems like a gimmick. I mean, if you know something's going to happen shortly, it just seems like a gimmick to go and incur all this expense to have bonding and bond council. It just seems like an opportunity for them to build the borough for some money that, for work that we don't really need. But you haven't really explained that, Mr. Marinello, because I, I would expect that if you get on this call, you would know what the timing issue is.
I just told you what it was, Mr. Mayor. I just told you what it was.
No, 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 don't, don't, don't speak over me, please. I would have expected as council explaining things to their client that you would actually know what issues are open on the CFO, when they'll get resolved, and when payment will be made.
Yeah, well, I don't have actually a list of things that still need to be screwed in or tightened or what have you at the LG building. The building department might have that. But my job is to make sure that we pass this ordinance in a proper legal fashion in a way that costs the borough the least amount of money in the long run. You would think you would have a common interest in that, but apparently you don't.
Well, I wouldn't
This is supposed to be the public portion, not the mayor's.
I wouldn't say anything as apparent or not apparent. I would just say that if I was going to come on in front of a group of people as attorney, I would have answers, and if you don't know what's going to get screwed in or not get screwed in right now, you should have found out. Because frankly, to go out, it's like, it's like so much, it's like the path of least resistance, right? It's so much easier for Anglerwood Cliffs to go out and borrow money than actually figure out what we need to do to collect money that's owed to us.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm the borough attorney. You're the mayor. You've had two weeks since this got introduced. You've found out as much about this as you wanted.
Well, I guess
You could have gone down to LG and seen what screws were loose.
Thank you for highlighting
You just came on here to bash me.
Thank you for highlighting that, because that is in fact a highlight of the way you choose not to work with me. Don't interrupt me, Ms. Sabari. This is very important, and this will illuminate from everybody the fact that a political borough council has no
Actually, Mario, this isn't important. You just wasted people's time.
No one wastes people's time. It's doing this at 8:00 AM on a Monday, when you could have done this in the evening when more people could participate. But I just want to shed light on the fact that Mr. Marinello is blaming me for not knowing what he should be knowing.
No, that's not true.
Because you're political, you don't see your job, and this may be one of the last meetings you will ever have in
I'm kind of hoping it is, Mr. Mayor, no offense.
Can I speak, please, as a resident?
Go ahead.
Mayor, you know, your rhetoric is not appreciated and necessary. Please be gracious and kind. Let me finish before you interrupt.
I didn't interrupt you. Go ahead.
The opening statement, your tone from the get-go was divisive and contentious. Your projector as to the intent of wanting this meeting in the morning may or may not have been true, but it was just your projector as a resident. I actually found it helpful that it was before my day started, and I would imagine there may be some residents who can't make it in the evening. So actually, as even procedural, it may be, maybe just something to consider that you alternate morning and evening, because not everyone can make it in the evening. There's a lot of different options to consider, and so I would think that as the leader, I would appreciate it if you could try to refrain from giving your opinion and just lead with the facts. That would help make these meetings, help me as a citizen, understand really the pros and cons. But when you start out with that tone, it's hard for me to really hear any of your reasoning. It's hard for me to trust your intention, because as the leader, you are so divisive.
Are you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so there's 40 people on this call right now. We've been averaging just under 100, because we have these meetings in the evening, number one. Number two, I imagine that out of the 40, there's probably 95% of the people who'll agree with me and not with you, okay? And number three
Let's take a vote.
There's no, don't interrupt me, please.
90% of the people believe anything with a percentage in it, Mario.
There's no problem, there's no problem with me asking Mr. Marinello, who's been paid a lot of money by this town, for answers. Those answers aren't for me. Those answers are for you and me, okay? And if you're willing to accept these non-answers and the fact that we should just go out and borrow money instead of collecting money that's owed to us, then that's your prerogative. But for me, I have a fiduciary duty to this town that you don't have. And for me to go out and borrow over a million dollars
It's my money you're spending.
So fee that there's a problem
My money you're spending.
Let me finish. I let you finish, and I asked you if you were done, and you said you were, and I am going to finish. Borrowing money is a knee-jerk reaction that this Democratic majority would rather go through than actually do their jobs right and have their professionals do their jobs.
That is not correct.
I am done.
So Mayor, Mayor, it's not a Democratic or Republican issue.
It is.
It's an issue for our entire town. So please stop making it a political one. I am the one whose taxes are going to go up. I do have a fiduciary responsibility here because I'm the one that's going to suffer as my taxes go up and as the town's reputation and being able to sell our homes go down. So please stop saying that this is a Republican or Democratic issue. We are all, I feel like this is mirroring our, our country. We are all in this together. We all care about the outcome. And when you continue to make it an I or a U, that doesn't help me join you in trying to really see what the issues are. What I just heard is it sounds like there's not a big downside and a big upside to doing this, and that we can't control when LG will or won't pay. You can expect money to come in, but I have this all, all the time, and my account's receivable. I'm running a business. I expect certain income, but you know what? My clients don't always pay on time, and then I have to cover that difference. So please, don't start saying that he, that any one of us here can control when LG is going to pay. Because that's a made up, that's a made up thing. That's wishful thinking.
Of course LG is going to pay. They have better credit than anyone, you know, so here's the thing, right? I'm not going to join you. I won't join you in your alternate reality. This is in fact a Democrat and a Republican issue.
Okay.
The Democrats had the opportunity, when they controlled council, and they lied to everybody to get your votes in 2018, to litigate this matter and build 100% affordable housing, not to destroy the town. So it is, the Republicans actually didn't want to do that. The Democrats did.
Nobody
And now they're trying to gloss it over and saying, this is something that we have to do. We have to go out and borrow money to build. Now, you, you recall, and I probably said this about 20 times, that the New Jersey law on this matter and our own affordable housing attorneys have always told us, hey, you know what? If the judge awards the builder the right to build, you will never have to build as a town. Well, you know what? Guess what? They were wrong. They lied to us because they didn't fight for us, and this Democratic majority went along with it. Why? Well, because the builders get to build and make a lot of money and push it back into the political campaigns of Democrats. That's the simple truth.
That is just
In fact, I will not join you in your alternate reality, Skolnick. You are free to live in that reality. I will not join you.
You're just reading the residents again.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
There's Ms. Beakis? I'll mute her, Mayor. Go ahead. You, you wanted to speak?
Yes, my name is Vifka Bigatz. I live in 191 Wood Road, Anglerwood Cliffs. Regarding this issue of the bond that Mr. Malinawi was talking about, when is the deadline that you have to put to this fund money in order to get the 9% credit on taxes?
I'm not entirely sure of that. The affordable housing lawyers would know that better. They were the ones who recommended this ordinance be passed. But the sooner the better, because we have applicants coming in. I think as of next week, we have the builders who are applying to be the builder on the job putting in their bids. So they would need to know whether or not this money is in place to see if we qualify for the better tax credit deal.
Okay, we certainly don't want to make the builders easy life in this town to build.
Well, that might be true, but this is, I'm talking about the builders that are going to build the 100%
I don't care who it is. I really don't care who it is. Their life will not be easy in this town to build, no matter what. Okay, so this is my opinion for all of you.
Thank you. Ms. Duffy, perhaps you could find out, just let me know later, what needs to be done for the CFO to be issued for LG? I, I hear these generalities about timing issues, but what, what is the timing issue? How much time is it?
Okay.
It doesn't know.
Right.
That's not what you asked me. Those are two different questions. The mayor, the mayor asked about the timing issue of the CO.
The CO, okay, no, I didn't ask you about the CO. You're right.
Well, you, you linked it to, Mr. Marinello. You said when the CO gets issued, they have to make their payment.
I said that about 10 minutes ago in response to your question about what the ordinance was about, not in response to this member of the public.
All right, well, you're very confused, but anybody else in the public wishing to be heard?
Adam D? Let me unmute him.
Okay, yeah, it's Adam DiCaprio, 545 Summit. So just a general question on the bond. What's the, what's the cost of having the bond written, or is that already incorporated in the general fees?
The small percentage that's already incorporated into these.
What's the percentage?
I can get back to you on that.
What is small?
I can get back to you on that, Adam.
Okay, thank you.
You want to send me an email? This way I know how to contact you?
Sure, yeah.
Lduffy@anglerwoodcliffnsj.org.
All right.
Young.
So Young, Mayor?
Yeah.
Hi, SoYoungly@195personroad. So going back to actually have, having a meeting at 8:00 AM on Mondays, I actually have to say a lot of people work and they have to prepare their day
Is this about the ordinance?
Yes, yes, I'm going to get there. Please, please do not interrupt me.
I'm going to interrupt you if you're talking about things that aren't permitted.
No, excuse me, I'm speaking.
Mr. Marinello, when Ms. Skolnick spoke about everything under the sun, you were very quiet, okay?
No, that's not true. She asked a question about the bond.
Oh, Young, go ahead. No, she didn't.
I, I have to, I have to put on the record objections for myself about the meeting time, yes. So I, I, yeah, excuse me, I'm speaking. Could you please stop? And I have to say, a lot, this is a very inconvenient time for a lot of people. That's why they are only 41 people instead of 100 people. About ordinances, what's the absolute deadline for this to be placed?
This is my question. That's what I asked.
Why do we need to do this right now? Why do we need to do this right now when there is new council coming in? Why can't wait?
I, I just.
Why can't you wait until there's?
Well, do you want me to answer the question or do you want to keep talking?
Please, I'm not finished, when I'm finished, I will let you know.
Let me know when you're done.
Yeah, so, um, yes, well, why can't we, why can't we wait until new council comes in? Okay, I'm done, could you please answer about this question?
Because the way government works is that it continues on whether or not different people are in charge. You don't have to wait till January till somebody else gets put into office. This is the way it works. Ordinances have to be introduced and passed in the same year or else they're not effective. So either this gets done now, which is what our affordable housing attorneys are telling us is best for the borough, or it gets done in January if it gets done at all. Obviously, there's a difference of opinion between those who are coming into office and those who are leaving as to what's best for the town. But unfortunately, for those who don't like this being done, that's not who's in control right now. So those people who are in control right now get to do what they think is best for the town, and that's what they think is better.
And the, the same affordable, um, housing attorneys who recommended settlement against the opposition resident, and they recommend this to be done this year before the new council, who won this election by landslide, representing the resident interest. It, we are talking about a month.
Yes, well, like I said, the statutes do not say that if you win the election, you take over power the next day. So they can vote on whatever they want to do in January. If they don't like this in January, they can take steps to, to try and, and prevent it from going forward. I mean, look, that's the way it works, that's how the election system works.
Okay, so, um, I, if you can please explain what the purpose of this ordinance again? Because I, I, I'm not really clear, so there is, uh, on, yes, please.
I'm going to explain it. We have a COA fund. That is money that is used and is collected by the borough from developers, goes into this account. And from that account, we are to spend it on affordable housing related matters. There is a large sum of money that will be coming in from the LG site when they get their CO. It's not ready to come in yet, so we don't have it. So as a result of that, we're borrowing money in anticipation of that money coming in in the near future so that we have enough money in our affordable housing account to make us an attractive candidate for nine percent tax credits so that it will be cheaper for all of you who are going to be here in 2021 and going forward. It won't cost as much to you to borrow the money to build the hundred percent affordable site that you have to build.
And when do you expect the LG CO to be issued?
I, I do not know that because I'm not in charge of the building department and how fast or slow they complete the items they still have to do. But under the law, they do not have to make that payment until they make, until they get a CO.
There's still some things with engineering, Ms. So Young, that have to be completed before it's issued.
Uh, so are we talking about a year or three years? I mean, do we, yeah, like what kind of timeline are we talking about?
I have to check with engineering on that, but there is.
It's going to be, yeah, it's still going to be some time because they don't care whether or not they have a CO right now because their people are barely working in the building. So they're not in any hurry to go in and do this and then make a million dollar plus payment to the town for a building they're not using.
If anyone asks them.
Are we, are we talking about a temporary CO or permanent CO? And when, do we, do they need to make the payment when the permanent CO is issued or a temporary CO? Because I would, yes, meaning temporary CO, permanent CO.
It's a permanent CO, they have a temporary CO. But the law does not require that they make this payment upon the issuance of a temporary CO, it's upon a permanent CO.
And then, and what's the cost of issuing this bond?
I don't have that, I don't have that in front of me, I believe it's in the, uh, no, it might be in the ordinance, Lizette, did you take a look at it?
No, it's not in there, but I'm trying to.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I could not find it. So, yeah, what kind of cost are we talking about? Are we talking about hundred thousand or are we talking about fifty thousand? I mean, don't we need to know as taxpayers what kind of, because, I mean, right now, the affordable housing, we are, we are not at the situation where, I mean, we are collecting bids. We don't need this money to pay anybody. And you are just doing this to make our time attract, I mean, attractable to bidders, but this is already very attractive, so why are we trying?
Okay, let me try and explain this again. It's not attractable to bidders, it's not, it's not the main issue. The issue is, are you attractable to the people who decide whether or not you're going to get the nine percent tax credits? That's the question. You want to be attractable to them so that they'll give you that and it will cost you less money to build.
And it's very.
But that's what you're doing.
And then, and then when, uh, I mean, when you say people, attractable to people, like what kind of people? Are, are they developers?
Yeah, what side are we talking about? Affordable housing, what side?
Please, one person at a time, the mayor will call upon everyone.
No, I mean, you're talking about that one to hundred percent affordable housing side, correct?
Yes.
And, um, so let's say we, we do not issue this bond, what happens?
Well, then you probably won't be as attractive a candidate for the nine percent tax credits. You'll qual, may qualify for the lesser tax credits and it will cost you more money to build that property.
Um, okay, so do we now know the, the cost of issuing this bond? And do we know if we don't do this, the increased cost in, in developing without this bond?
I don't have that information, the affordable housing attorneys might have that more specific information.
I mean, don't we need them here now? Because, I mean.
No, we don't need them here. They were at the last meeting and they explained all of this in closed session.
But you're not explaining, yeah, you're not explaining to the residents who are here right now, forty-three people at nine AM.
I've explained it, you're, you're just choosing not to accept it.
No, no, no cost, what's the cost of issuing this bond? And what's the cost of increased development cost without this bond? It, are they the very most essential questions that you need to answer or somebody needs to answer? Why not?
Because I've explained it to you.
There is no guarantee that even if we go out and get this bond and put this money aside in the COA trust fund, that we will be awarded the nine percent tax credit. But that is the hope and that gives us a, a stronger position with all these other towns that are competing for the same nine percent tax credit. So that's why we're doing this. If, you know, we're talking millions of dollars more if we don't get the nine percent tax credit.
How much?
Depend, that will all depend, I can't.
Sorry, how much, how much you said, I couldn't hear it.
I can't give you a how much because we have to look at what is actually going to be built in the long run. The developers who are bidding on this, all, I think their, their bids are actually due today.
No, they're, they're due tomorrow by twelve o'clock.
Okay, I thought today was the twenty-third. Um, so we, we don't know the exact numbers just yet, but we do know based on the plan that was submitted back, you know, prior to my being on the council, that we were talking about a minimum of twelve million dollars if we couldn't get the nine percent tax credit. So again, the numbers aren't ironed out yet. It is going to cost the town, there are certain things that we do have to pay for. And hopefully we'll have enough money in the COA fund to pay for those, like the demolition of buildings and some engineering and different things that we're going to have to come out of pocket for. So we don't have all those numbers in, you know, set and that I can sit here and say to you, this is exactly what it's going to cost. You have bond council that you're going to have to pay for this bond. And, you know, we'll see what the interest rates are. Um, I think the bond is for twenty-five years, I don't have it in front of me. So, um, my understanding is, is that the cost of this bond being paid back is probably going, could, you know, will depend on what our interest rates are when we go out for this bond. And I wish we could give you more information, but what I can tell you is if we don't go out and get this bond right now, that we will probably not qualify for the nine percent tax credit. So we're trying to do everything we can to keep the cost down to the borough. That's the only reason we're doing this. It's not that we're spending any money, the money is going to come, it's going to go into the COA trust fund. It will be used to comply with our obligations for affordable housing. That's what I can tell you.
And I'll do one last question, so without this bond.
So Young, can I say one thing?
Sure.
I think the, one of the most basic things is that somebody just needs to pick up the phone and call LG and say a lot of people pay their CO amounts upon their TCO. Would you please do that here as well? I mean, let's avoid having to spend more money.
You know, I wish it was that easy, and Mario, you know it's not that easy.
Of course it is.
That, that conversation already occurred back when they got the TCO, so.
Really, I wasn't part of it, so I'm going to trust you.
Well, you're not usually in charge of conversation. Well, you can make the call yourself.
This is the first time I'm hearing about it, so why would I trust you?
You go ahead and make the call yourself, Mayor.
I will make the phone call.
You do that.
And you just sit there and do nothing, okay? Thank you.
I actually have a one last question, so without issuing this bond, um, so any, uh, any fund borough has, uh, would not be qualified for this purpose? So we have to issue this bond in order to be eligible or attractable for the nine percent tax credit?
In order to make our town more attractive. Now, remember, there's a lot of competition here for these tax credits. This is one area is having this money available in your COA trust fund. So that is why we are putting this money into the fund is to increase our chances of the nine percent tax credit, which will be worth millions and millions of dollars to the taxpayers.
And is this bond going to be repaid when LG pays their, their share?
That is.
Will there be, will there be, will there be any prepayment penalty?
That is, that is the, that is the hope that we'll be able to pay this back.
I, I think, uh, this is Councilman, well, I think that's a very important question that the resident just asked. We're paying for twenty-five years of interest when there might be a timing gap of a month with LG. We don't know what that, that timing gap is. Um, the mayor brought that issue up. Um, it should have been something we were plowing full steam ahead um, a while back to figure out what LG, they should be aligned with us on that issue. LG should want to get their CO as quickly as possible because they need to move forward with things that they need to do. So I, I'm not quite sure why we don't know the answer to that question.
No, I think LG is up and operational with a TCO. And a lot of what goes into coming up with what they'll be responsible for is based on the assessed value. And the attorneys for LG and our attorneys, our tax assessors have been working on trying to come to an agreement on what that number is. And then there's a separate number altogether that applies specifically just to the affordable housing fee, that one percent that they have to pay, uh, is based on a completely different scenario, so it's not.
The reality of this, the reality of this.
Let me finish.
Let me finish, okay? The reality is that they can continue to operate there with a TCO. And if you're being told as a business owner that you need to come up with a million dollars today or a month from now, what are you going to do? You're going to say, here, take the million dollars today? How does that make any sense whatsoever? Of course, it's a predicament, the building is empty, it's not even occupied. Most people are not back to work. So I don't see them handing over a million dollars just to be nice.
Yeah, no, but I mean, my question was really whether there, we will be able to prepay. And I mean, there should be some sort of written obligation, um, somewhere that once LG pays, then this bond will be paid off with an LG payment without any premium, prepayment penalty.
Again, we don't have, you know, we don't have a crystal ball here. The idea.
No, I understand, no, I understand, but the bond contract.
Now, right, by, by, in accordance with our settlement agreement, there are things that need to happen and they need to happen in a certain timeline. I know that there are people who don't agree with the settlement agreement. But the reality is, is that it was approved and we are working toward our obligation. And one of our obligations is to get this out to bid, get the bids back and get the process rolling. So part of this is we need to do this sooner than later because we need to be able to qualify for the nine percent tax credits. We're talking a substantial amount of money. We can sit here and talk about what the prepayment penalty would be, which I don't believe there is one. But we can check into that, but the reality is we have to do it. I'm not getting LG's money tomorrow and we need to qualify.
But Councilman Subari, I am not, I, I'm not objecting to what you just said. I just asked a simple question, can we make sure we can pay off this bond without paying any prepayment penalty?
Yes, we can, we can look, we can speak to our bond council, but we need to move forward with getting this bond. We don't really have a choice at this point.
I don't like the way this sounds because essentially you would be borrowing a million for and then potentially collecting a million for. Uh, and, you know, I think the citizens have been cheated enough in this town and in the state.
That would be your bad.
That's not right, Mayor.
So, so, uh, So Young actually brings up some very good points here because the, the worst thing we could do possibly is put more money into that trust account than we have to, uh, which is probably what's going to end up happening, you all have your wish.
If you don't put it in, you'll need it to do your affordable housing.
I understand that and I understand the way it works. But now we're going to be collecting the same amount twice, maybe not being able to repay one or the other. And, you know, we know how things go in New Jersey, right?
No matter what I say.
Let me finish, whenever government has your money, they will spend it, okay? They're not going to pay.
We're not going to have it, so.
You are the government, so.
You're the government right now.
You will have your control as of January.
Because you are the government right now, the four of you are the ones who don't.
You will be the government as of January first, so if you don't want to spend it, you don't have to spend it.
We will have it in January, but right now the damage is being done by you, Gloria, you Stabby, you Jimmy, and you.
Stop pointing fingers, okay? Let's get over it.
Those are the fingers that need to be pointed, and for too long, the residents.
You love to point fingers. You know what, now then you're going to have the control, you can't blame. Is this still the public portion? You got to own up to it.
No, no, you own up to it, Gloria, you're not going to escape it.
You're not going to have anyone else to blame anymore, it's all going to be on you.
Well, Gloria, let me tell you something, and let me ask you something also. How, how do you feel about borrowing the money that you're going to be collecting anyway?
Mayor.
But it's not.
The attorney just explained to you and, and Councilman Subari explained to you that in order for us to be more attractive, to get the nine percent tax credit, this is one of the things that we have to do, okay?
But you're going to have a receivable from LG anyway.
The question is very, a good question, what So Young asked, okay? But we can't make LG pay today because we need the money, you just can't.
You're going to have a receivable from LG.
May I? Yeah, Mayor, um, can we, I mean, can we have something today? In fact, you know, this ordinance will be passed. Right, right, but you, with a clear understanding that, you know, you are going to do your best to put in this clause about no, no prepayment penalty so that this can be paid and it's not outstanding for the next twenty-five years when there is, there is bond. I mean, isn't that, isn't that the right thing to do here? Because we are trying to do this bridge according to you.
So Young, or if I just ask the clerk, the administrator, go to LG and see if it's permitted to issue the CO with, with conditions going forward that have to be satisfied.
I mean, apparently this council is going to vote on this no matter what. But isn't, shouldn't it be really clear from this meeting that this ordinance is going to be voted with a clear understanding that there should be no prepayment penalty so that this bond is not going to be outstanding for the next twenty-five years? What if LG pays in February? We are talking about two, three months and now there is no other way to deal with this other than paying prepayment penalty? I, I, I think this should be really considered as a factor in order to approve. I'm actually surprised that, um, the council has not thought about this. Um, when I understand the need to approve this, but don't we need to protect the borough? For the next, I mean, it's going to be outstanding for the next twenty-five years. And usually, if there is a prepayment penalty, they are very, they are very happy.
I agree with you and, um, you know, unfortunately it was not explained to us well by Marinella or the other attorneys.
Right, I mean, I didn't see any, any real detailed terms about the bond.
I hear her loud and clear. I also know that if we don't get the nine percent tax credit, we will have to come out of money.
I understand that, Ms. Subari.
There are costs.
To that, I'm not object to that. I, I think in order to make this happen, there should be a clear understanding that there should be no prepayment penalty when the borrower is in the position to pay back.
A- again, we don't have the exact numbers and the cost that the borrower is going to have to incur. We will have costs that we will have to incur that are not going to be picked up by the developer. So we will have expenses that we have to pay out of that COA trust.
I understand.
So the million four might not be going back anywhere.
Let, let me also. Debbie, can I add something?
Go right ahead.
I'm just rereading through the ordinance and the ordinance allows for the issuance of bonds or notes. So the difference between those things is a bond is a long-term issue and a note is a one-year issue. So my suspicion is that ultimately the, uh, bond counsel will do the, treat this as going out for a note rather than for a bond so that it's only one year in anticipation that LG will pay within the next year. So that you won't have any long-term costs or prepayment penalties.
That makes sense. Oh, then maybe can we just make it, this ordinance will be issued for the purpose of issuing notes rather than bonds?
No, because we can't change it at this point.
No, and we don't know until we have the final number if we're going to need that money. We need to leave it open that we have a choice.
The, the other reason you don't do that, Ms. Lee, is because ultimately you can convert a note into a bond. And if you, uh, end up not qualifying for the nine percent tax credits, you're going to need to finance this money over a longer term period. So it doesn't really make any sense to do that. I'm sure they will issue it as notes for the time being so that the short-term issue can be taken care of. But it's not really my, my ballpark, but I'm sure that's what they're planning on doing.
Yeah, um, I mean, just from my perspective, uh, just a resident perspective, like without, um, having this kind of clarity on the borrowers. I mean, I, I thank you, thank you for the explanation. Um, if it's going to be issued in, in the form of a note, you know, that will probably better than, uh, in the form of a bond. But there is really no guarantee at this point and we really do not have any idea about prepayment penalty. So I'm asking the council to make sure that there will be no prepayment penalty if the borrower is in the position to pay back with whatever funds that they have, either from LG or somewhere. I understand it may not be paid back in full because there will be other expenses, but.
Okay.
This should not be outstanding forever when there is, like.
It will be handled in, in the best way possible for the borough. Keep in mind with interest rates being as low as they are right now, very seldom do you come across prepayment penalties because nobody wants to lock in these low interest rates for 25 years. So I will speak with the bond counsel and find out where they stand on this issue. But in my experience, right now you don't have issue with prepayment penalties because most people would like to get out of being locked in to a two percent interest rate. So, but we will.
Yeah, yeah, please.
We will do the best thing possible for the town.
Yeah, please, because, yeah, there are, yeah.
That and see if, you know, if anybody else has any questions that haven't been answered. I, I think we're still in public and.
Yeah, I, one last thing, uh, for, because for a, a lot of commercial loans, there is always a very, very hefty prepayment penalty, even in this kind of low interest environment. So I just want to make sure that that's not going to be happened, that's not going to happen. And also, um, in terms of the cost breakdown of issuing this bond, if you can make that public whenever you have, whenever you, you have the information so that the public is, um, public is updated on that. Because I think that's also another very important piece of information that the public should have known before the council, um, votes on this matter without understanding the cause.
Just a vote to go out and do what we do. Okay.
So here, look.
Mario, can we, um?
Just to summarize, the issues are, what is the timing issue, right? We don't know how much time. We don't know if we could issue a CVO right now with conditions to.
Can you speak into your microphone? I can't hear you.
Sorry, I'm not sure why that's not picking up. Um, I'll try again. So the issues right now are, we don't exactly know what the timing issues are in terms of the actual time. We don't know if we could issue a CVO with conditions, uh, post issuance that need to be satisfied in order to trigger, uh, the payment, uh, and, and make this bond not necessary. We also know that.
We would make this not necessary.
We, we know that answer.
Finish, let me finish, please. We also know that essentially the trust account has a receivable from LG, uh, for this amount and, and that, I, I'm not sure why, and it seems like there's a disconnect. I'm not sure why that would somehow ruin your nine percent tax credit when you have it, when you actually have this good receivable from LG, uh, you know, rather than have to bond it. So th- those are issues that I wish our professionals had answers to, um, and we'll try to get those to the public. And anybody else in the public wishing to be heard?
Mayor, would you like me to contact bond counsel to come on this meeting?
Uh, you could do that.
Okay. Give me one second. Um, Mrs. McMorro has her hand up.
Go ahead, Mrs. McMorro.
Uh, good morning, Carol McMorro, 49 Summit Street. Um, if bond council mayor is going to come on the call, I would like to, um, be able to ask him a question separately, but I will continue not to waste anybody's time right now. Thank you very much. Um, you know, it, it would be appreciated for the public's sake. Um, Ms. Sabari keeps speaking and saying, I will find this out, I will do this, I will do that. I think for everyone listening, i- if we hear the word we instead of I, Ms. Sabari is one of seven. And, um, perhaps if she shared all the information with the rest of the council that she has, from listening to all of you, not so many people will be in the dark about what's going on. You are a collective body and can only make decisions collectively. Um, but that's not, is what is appearing is happening. Um, I have some questions, whether Mr. Marinello would be kind enough to answer them or, um, Ms. Duffy. Um, I'm just going to read them, Mr. Marinello, if that's easier for you. All at once, because they all have to do with each other, they're, they're math questions. So, um, how, how would you like me to proceed?
I went to law school because I'm not good at math, but you can proceed any way you want.
Yeah, okay, all right, well. Um, how much do we presently have in our COA account?
I don't have any idea.
Okay, Ms. Duffy?
I can look that up for you now. Would you like to send me your questions and I can reply via email?
No, no, my question, the, you're voting, you're making representations to the, to the public that you don't, that you need more money in your COA trust account, yet you're telling me you don't know how much you have in your COA trust account?
No, no, all she told you is I don't.
I could look it up.
Okay, I appreciate that. That's not, you just said, write the questions and send them and you'll email them back. So, okay, well, I, I will continue and if you can answer that, uh, while I go on. So, A, how much do we have in our, um, COA trust account? And what would be considered a satisfactory amount for this, um, nine percent credit? Um, which by the way, while I was on the council for three years, I was never advised by any of the same attorneys, other than Mr. Wunsch, who was not there when I was there, that the amount of money in our COA trust account mattered for the, um, the attractiveness of the nine percent credit. So, um, you're making representations that, um, you're being advised that, uh, dependent on what's in that account is going to affect the attractiveness. Am I understanding you correctly?
I, I'm not sure if there was a question there. I'm not, I don't really understand. I, please start over.
Marinello, this is, okay, let me, let me just say it again. There are representations that were made repeatedly by several residents asking questions and I, I believe Ms. Sabari was responding or yourself, whichever one of the two of you, that you need to be as attractive as possible for the nine percent tax credit. And given that LG has not paid any of their portion of their COA monies, that you're supplementing that to, uh, make it more attractive. Is that not what has been said for the last 20 minutes in public as I'm sitting here taking notes?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so my. Thank you. So my question, as direct as it is, what, A, how much is in our COA account? B, what is considered a satisfactory amount? Those are my first two questions. Next, you want to answer those or you're looking those up while we're?
Well, I believe Ms. Duffy is looking up the amount and I would tell you that the amount that would make it satisfactory according to our affordable housing lawyers is that amount plus the amount in these bonds.
Okay, that's, that's reasonable response, thank you. Next, um, again, I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. You said that, uh, LG has not paid any portion of their COA contribution.
That's not true.
I don't think that that's true, but I don't think they've paid their full amount.
Okay, do we know how much they have paid and how much is outstanding from the amount that was, that, that, that is, uh, their requested amount?
Um, I don't, off, off the top of my head, I don't know the answer to that. I know that those numbers were, uh, available to the affordable housing lawyers and to the bond council so that they could come up with the appropriate amount for this bond, but.
And Mr. Marinello, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just asking informative questions here. Appreciate your, if you don't.
I'm just giving, yeah, I'm just giving you what I know and don't know.
And, and just for the public's sake, if Ms. Duffy could email Ms. Scankarella right now, I know that, that's, that's a chart. She could just email her, get that information as well, especially since bond council is going to come on the call.
I don't know if bond council is coming on yet.
Oh, okay, I don't know. But how much has LG paid? I, I think it would help the public with their, all of their unease of what are these outstanding amounts? How much has LG paid on their COA? And what is outstanding on their COA? Um, that's, that's those two questions. Um, hold on one second. So I, I looked at the RFQ, which, um, the, Ms. Duffy was correct, it's tomorrow, uh, 24th at 12 noon. My, my confusion on this part, Mr. Marinello, if you can help me through this process, what if there's no one that you find through those bidders that are satisfactory? Wouldn't you, you do have the ability to, um, go out to bid again, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you're acting, and I'm not.
I'm not acting at all.
Not, not, not you, not, just talking about in general. This council is, is acting, um, as, as if they already know they're going to have someone tomorrow satisfactory when we don't know who you're going to have and you might not even have someone satisfactory, which would then buy you the time to get all the answers that the residents, very good questions. Both Ms. Scholnick raised some questions, um, So Young, uh, Lee raised some questions. And I think the, the residents just need to have all the answers and the council should want all the answers before they vote on something so important. I don't believe, Mr. Marinello. I don't believe, once you bond, and I could be wrong, and again, bond council will tell you or your affordable housing lawyers will tell you, once you bond and place that money into your affordable housing account, I don't believe you can pay back because the money is going into your affordable housing account, correct? Is that where you're putting this money?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so if you go to your own ordinances, it states you have a COA spending plan. You can only take money out of that COA spending plan for certain things. I don't believe paying yourself back is one of them. The ordinance is online, I just looked at it very quickly. But somebody on that council needs to, to make sure before you vote, or you should want to know before you vote, are you allowed to pay yourself back from a COA trust fund is really the question, not just a paying you back. Because once you place it into the COA trust fund, it is very strict and I'm aware of that from working with Jeff on the COA trust plan, that there are only certain things you can take money out of that account for, Mr. Marinello. And I'm just saying, I think you want.
I understand what you're saying. This issue was discussed at length on a phone call that I had with the affordable housing team, the borough auditor and the borough's bond counsel. And everybody seemed to be satisfied that it was not.
By the way, I wasn't invited to that call, right?
It's because you, you weren't useful.
Thank you, thank you. The mayor is not useful, but the mayor should know, Mr. Marinello.
None of the other council people were on it either.
Well, yeah, but they're not the mayor, are they? They're not the mayor, are they? No, they're not. No, they're not. This is the problem with you.
No, it's not.
It's the problem with you. The town is basically being run by, and that's why we're in a problem.
Okay, Mr. Marinello, I'm just trying to be helpful.
I believe he's one of the, you're one of the lawyers, mayor.
I'm not one of the lawyers, I'm the mayor. I am a lawyer by practice, but I don't represent the borough as an attorney, please.
Okay. Um, Mr. Marinello. Mr. Marinello.
What do you want, Carol, speak?
Mr. Marinello.
I should get off the call because there are a lot of questions that you can't answer.
Mrs. McMorro, could you please ask me a question now?
But I, well, I thought I was, I, I will continue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if the mayor or, so who was on the call where the decision was made?
I'm not answering, this is not germane to the ordinance. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. That's what I'm going to answer questions about.
I am going to.
Ask me about anything else, I'm not going to.
I'm asking you about the ordinance.
No, you're not. You're asking me about a phone call I had a few weeks ago. And I, I don't have to tell you who was on the call.
You know.
No, this is authorization to bond, not the bond issuance.
Okay, if I may just continue, I think that my questions are right on point and I'm sorry if they may be some uncomfortable questions, but they are directly on point.
Go, go ahead and ask.
You have made representations to the public that if you pass this, um, ordinance, that you will be able to pay it back. So that being said, I'm only asking the question, who gave you, who said that? You're saying that the.
I just told you, I had a, you know, Carol, who the borough's affordable housing attorneys are. And you know who the borough's auditor and bond counsel are because they've been the same people for years. So I don't know what else to tell you. That's who was on the call.
My question to you, which, and again, I don't know why you're so defensive on.
Because you're wasting my morning, count the ordinance.
I'm sorry, we're wasting your time, Mr. Marinello.
Yes, you are. You are all wasting the borough's money on this call for me having to answer questions that have nothing to do with the ordinance.
The resident has a question. If you can't answer it, just say, I can't answer it, but don't be rude.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I, um, my question is directly on point to whether or not it can be paid back. If Mr. Marinello is saying that he was told that, and I'm not questioning the fact of whether or not he was or was not, I'm just trying to understand that clearly, that he is saying that he was told by the affordable housing lawyers and the bond counsel, who by the way, has a vested interest because he's being paid to make this transaction, that this can be paid back. And if it can be paid back, then I do understand they're wanting to move forward with this.
Okay, so that's what we were talking.
But if it cannot be paid, which your ordinance reads out of the COA trust fund, okay? That is problematic. And I would assume as a council whole, okay? Who would override Mr. Marinello, since it appears none of the council was on this call, okay? Would get that in writing from your professionals that this can be paid back. Clearly, my asking for the council to get that in writing troubled Mr. Marinello that he walked away from the camera.
Uh, Mrs. McMorro, just.
Right here, Carol.
Some of your questions.
It's not the bond issuance. We will look into any prepayment penalties. It was my understanding we would be able to pay ourselves back. Um, I will in fact verify that.
Ms. Sabari, that's fine, but once you pass that today, you cannot look into it any longer.
That's not true, this is an authorization to bond, not.
Okay, all right, so you're saying that if you find out that you can't, that you will pull this?
If we find out that we can't or that we don't need this money, it's very possible that these, these, the developers who are qualifying right now, supposedly we, we, we have a very large turnout, a very qualified developers who are interested in doing our 100% affordable project.
How do you know that before anything's open?
Well, because the, we already had deadlines where people had to, um, submit their interest in moving to the next step, so that's how I know that.
I understand, I respect that. I'm just saying, you know, to, to, anyway, it's all disappointing on just trying to ask.
No, no, I, I understand you and I'm not saying that it, it's not a legitimate concern and, and I agree. And I will in fact go back to the affordable housing team. Um, this recommendation came from the team, not the attorneys that are. It actually is Bob Powell, who is... Affordable Housing. So, they feel very strongly that this will help us. So, we're just trying to keep the cost down for the borough. I will look into your questions, they're legitimate questions, and get back to you. But our voting on being authorized to bond or to issue notes is exactly that. It's just an authorization, it's not the actual issuance of the bond.
That's correct. Can I answer some of Mrs. McMorro's questions?
Go right ahead.
Sure, thank you.
And that's correct, we, it's where the passing of the ordinance is to appropriate the money. And once it's signed by the mayor, it takes, it's about 20 days after I publish it. So, it does not happen right away. As far as the money that's in COA right now in our trust account, it's a little bit over a million one. That's currently what we have. The bill submitted to LG for COA funds, about 11,700. What they paid their first payment, they paid $618,000. So, they still owe us about $11 million. I have a message out to our building official, if he can issue a letter asking LG to pay in full or pay a portion. They're not obligated to at this point. The ordinance, not this ordinance, our ordinance for COA says, for the CO, once they have the CO to pay, but we'll certainly try to get as much money as we can upfront.
Thank you so much, Ms. Duffy. So, so does, does commercial, they work different than residential? Because I know when you build a, like a residential home, you have to pay, I thought you pay your money to COA upfront before you even start building.
Perhaps, I, I don't want to answer that, I don't know the correct answer.
Okay.
But they did pay, they, they paid a nice amount, not a big amount.
Well, I think it's, considering if they owe 11 million, it's, you'd like a lot more, but thank you.
Absolutely, I agree. I have, I have our Bond Counsel on the call. He was able to meet us last minute. So, I'm going to unmute Mr. Mayor. And perhaps he can answer some of the residents' question, if that's okay with you, Mayor.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, thank you for joining us this morning. Good morning to you. Some questions came up regarding the, the bond ordinance that I understand your firm wrote. And, and the main issue is whether or not that bond could be repaid without penalty or fee.
Bill, can you please unmute, we, you're muted. Bill?
Morning.
Oh, God, thank you, thank you.
The, as Lizeth said, hello, I'm back, I'm here, I'm live.
You're live.
This, the bond ordinance, as Lizeth said, is, is an appropriation. The sizing, the appropriation was done together with Joe and Jeff Serenian and Steve Wilcox. No, it authorizes the issuance of bonds and notes. My understanding was the contemplation would be that they would issue notes to fund the COA trust fund to increase the likelihood of increasing 9% tax credits from HMFA. No obligations have been issued. It's typically, Mayor, what would happen here is notes would be issued, up to 1,377,500. If you receive additional LG money or additional COA trust fund money, that amount could be reduced, 1,377,500 is the maximum. The typical procedure would be to issue those notes for one year. They wouldn't be subject to prepayment. Interest rates are very reasonable right now. You could negotiate with your bank to have them subject to prepayment, and have the bank buy them. But generally, the public market is, you know, they're one-year notes, they're not subject to prepayment, they're paid of maturity.
Okay, but there's also the notion of a 25-year bond in here.
Um, there is a period of usefulness in here of up to 30 years. The bond ordinance does need to contain a period of usefulness. The period of usefulness is derived from the fact that the, the project is expected to be a Class B building under the local bond law, which has a useful life up to 30 years. I don't expect you'll ever get to a bond issue, but if you did, you could issue a bond up to 30 years under this ordinance. The more typical pattern would be to issue notes. You could issue notes for three years with interest only, and then you have partial paydowns. You could issue notes for up to 10 years, actually 10 years until May 1 of the following year. I don't know what, what the long-term plan is, though, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. I think we, we as a town need to get clear on a couple, couple other things that we've talked about this morning, and I thank you for getting on. Did anyone have any questions for Mr. Mayor? I know, Ms. McMorro, you reserved the ability to ask questions, so I want to be respectful of that.
My only question, Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Duffy.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
My only question was, can it be from the COA trust fund? Can the money be pulled from a COA trust fund and paid to a borough? I thought the way the ordinance read, Mr. Mayor, is that you cannot reimburse the borough for anything through a COA trust fund.
I don't think, Ms. McMorro, the ordinance addresses at all reimbursement. My education on that came from the COA settlement agreement, which Mr. Marinello may be more familiar with, which did allow for reimbursement.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just, I, I'm just specifically referencing if the money, whether it's a note or, or, well, you're specifying...
Mrs. McMorro, I'm trying to find that out for you. And if I understand it correctly, your question is, eventually, once the COA trust gets funded by the bond, and if we receive the money from LG in the interim, are we able to take the money back out of the COA trust to pay back the bond, correct?
Well, it's almost there. If we, if we, if we fund the note and then place it into the COA trust account. And then, after we place it, we get money from the, from the LG payment. My understanding, and again, from working with Jeff, that money, any money you place into a COA trust account, you cannot take back out. But again, that, that's what was explained to me by, by Jeff. And I, I'm just asking if something's changed in that explanation.
Yeah.
Jeff is the one asking for us to do this and to do it in this manner. So, I think it's pretty clear that Jeff thinks this is okay.
Yes.
I also spoke into the auditor, and the auditor thinks there's no problem with this. So, I'm not really thinking...
Mr. Marinello, respectfully, I wasn't on the call, and if the question was...
Yes, we don't have members of the public on the call.
Okay, I don't...
Apparently, you don't even have the mayor, but that's a whole other issue. And by the way, by the way, could I just make a comment regarding Jeff? Jeff is also the guy who told us to only have two witnesses at a trial.
This has nothing to do with the ordinance.
I only had one, I only had one on track.
Mrs. McMorro, to answer your question, in the, the settlement agreement, the Fair Share Housing, right? The borough has the right to obtain a refund from the trust fund for monies not yet received at this time, so the borough can pay itself back.
That, that's my understanding too, Lizeth. You, you may, I, I assume the settlement agreement is a... And you may want to share that with Ms. McMorro, she's...
Mr. Mayor, my question was pretty direct on how a COA trust fund works. Now, whether behind the scenes, there were different side deals made as to how the COA trust fund will be utilized. I'm not privy, I'm not asking to be privy, and I never said that. And for Mr. Marinello to make these snide comments to any member of the public is really not acceptable. My only statement is, are you following the guidelines of the COA trust account? Clearly, it seems, by everyone jumping in now, that there were side deals made within this settlement agreement, which are gonna allow you to possibly supersede. Excuse me, I'm not saying you. How, how a COA trust fund is usually, not usually, always utilized, okay? So, if you're saying something else, I, I, I'm not gonna even ask you to get into those conversations, because clearly, there were other side conversations, okay?
Mrs. McMorro, in the Fair Share Housing Agreement, it says it. It, it says in there that the borough has the right to obtain a refund from the trust monies and then pay it back. So...
I understand that, I just didn't know that, that a, and maybe it can, I didn't know a Fair Share Housing Agreement could supersede what your COA spending plan says has, it has to be utilized for. If you're saying it can, it's fine, I'm...
I think that's better off for, for the borough, that once we get the money from LG, we can, we can pay it back.
Ms. Duffy, are you, right now, are you being advised by anybody?
No, I, I was writing these notes down while she was asking questions and trying to look into it. And I just...
Are you on with, I'm just asking, are you in communication right now with Mr. Serenian or Mr. Channing?
No, I'm not, Mayor.
Okay.
The only person I contacted was Bill.
Is it okay to move on to the next person, Mayor?
Ms. McMorro, did you have anything else to add?
She muted herself, let me unmute her.
Ms. McMorro, were you finished? I guess she's done.
Okay, there is a park, I don't know if it's...
Okay, you can hear me? Ah, yes, this is marked by 86th Street. Thanks for your comment. My opinion here regarding issue about the bond. Did you have a chance to talk to the LG guys in advance? Because my, you know, this is a business deal, and anyhow, they have a, a kind of payable obligation. We have a kind of receivable, you know, condition at this time, you know, before issuing this, you know, the bond. Why don't you approach to them and, you know, ask them, pay in advance this portion of amount? I think they can accept our deal, maybe, why not? So, you know, just, you know, couple days delay about this issue bond, and please talk to the LG, you know, the CFO. And maybe if they don't accept it, we can make a deal, maybe our, you know, the expense portion, maybe we can sacrifice. So, you know, our government body can approach to them, no matter what. They have a, you know, reserve of the counter payable portion. So, this kind of money, they can pay in advance, that's my opinion, please. Try, you know, our team, make a deal, and make a deal with them, that's my opinion. What do you think of it?
Thank you, Mr. Park, I, I agree with you, and I try to do, I think.
Yes, do that, that, you know, it is complicated, why issue bond? There is, and that is, you know, additional cost for our town. So, they will try our best. And then, you know, we can do, move on next, you know, step, that's my opinion.
I think what I'm hearing, the last thing we want to do is create a slush fund for, for more nonsense with affordable housing, and we want to be careful about that. Anybody else wishing to be heard? And, Mr. Mayor, thank you also for joining us. Mr. Matea?
Yes, I can't hear you, Bill, you're on mute.
75 Robert wrote, "I had some interesting questions I heard from Mr. McMorro, some good points from Ms. Lee. Mr. Park also had good suggestion. But I'll tell you from what I understand, 2018, the borough had to make a request to the judge, or file a motion, whatever it was. And the judge had to authorize or release of funds to buy the land. So, in my common sense, that gives me the answer that the, once the money is deposited in that COA trust account, you would have to go back to the judge. It doesn't matter what settlement agreement you have or points you have with Fair Share. I believe Fair Share's agreement would not override the statute or the rules which are in place." So, that was my comment. So, the question is, do you really want to go back to the judge? Who basically has been not great for the town in general? Number one. Number two.